Did you like my picture? Oh, you're on mute. And you just have to, I set it up so people would automatically be muted when they join the meeting.
How about me now?
Yeah, now you're good. So Michelle just called me. She's not going to be here tonight. Her, John is sick.
Oh, sorry to hear it.
It's all right. It's, uh, thrown up, so. Yeah, yeah. So, well, it's just the two of us on. I tested positive today. Like everywhere. I can't tell you how many people I had to tell too, because I went into work yesterday. So the boys, the boys had tested positive for COVID last week and our protocol at work is that we can go if we're asymptomatic and have a negative PCR. So I've been getting PCR tested every other day, like literally every other day. And it's been negative. And I went into work yesterday and then today I just got this obnoxious headache, which I get headaches all the time. And I didn't even really think anything of it, but I was supposed to go into work tomorrow. And it didn't go away with ibuprofen. So I was like, I should just test just to be careful. And I took a test at home and it was positive. So there it is. And I just like feel, I mean, I feel fine. I just feel so bad for, I mean, even with, I mean, I'm always masked everywhere I go now. You know what I mean? So every, but you know, technically, like anybody I've been in a room with for more than 15 minutes, even if we're duly masked, I have to tell, so.
How many hundreds of, how many hundreds of people is that?
So I'm an outpatient nurse practitioner in the neurology clinic, so I only saw seven patients in clinic yesterday. So my volume, it's not like I'm working in an emergency room. I don't even know what they do when something like that happens and they're working in the emergency room. You know, I mean, the volume's got to be so high there, but I think they will wear an N95s in the emergency room now. So whereas I just wear regular surgical masks. So anyways, and then all just my coworkers who I saw yesterday, and we all try and, I work in a multidisciplinary clinic. Taking care of like kids with neuromuscular disorders. So we all try and, instead of everybody being in the room at one time, we try and cycle through now with.
Right.
So I really wasn't very close with. And I try, even when I'm with the patients, like when I'm taking the history, I'm on the other side of the room. So I'm sure everybody's fine. It's just it's everywhere.
It is. It is. It's absolutely everywhere. I, you know, when I, when I communicate the statistics tonight, it's, they're so different than they've ever been for this school. And the good news is I think we're over the hump. We're over the, uh, the vacation and holiday hump. And a lot of people are coming back after their isolation and and quarantine. So that's good.
Yeah.
But I mean, 5:30 tonight, I was informed that another staff member tested positive.
Yeah. I mean, I was listening to NPR this morning and they have a thousand staff members from the Boston Public Schools. And I just thought to myself, like we in the hunt really need to put it into perspective. I mean, they've, they've gone remote for schools. Like it's awful. Um, so you know, it, it's rough everywhere, I'm sure. But can you imagine that? Can you imagine being in Boston Public Schools, a thousand staff members? Like, that's insane.
Yeah, it's, uh, I forget what school district. Oh, it was New York City, 35,000. 35,000 tested positive. Uh, in Seattle, when I was out there, the rate was about 10%. And we're running at about 10% now.
10% down?
10% have tested positive.
Yeah.
But, but our number is so small that.
Yeah. It's only, right, it's a handful of people, but still. Yeah, I wonder how many a thousand, like I wonder how, how many percent that is. I mean, it's enough that it closed this, you know, the schools are are virtual, you know, in Boston, but, um, I don't know percentage wise, how many there is. It just was an astounding number of people that are either out because of, they tested positive or because of close contacts or whatever, you know?
I bet the numbers, I bet the percentage isn't that high.
It's probably the same, maybe the same.
Uh, I had 1,100 employees in Somerville, Somerville with about 5,000 students. They're 50,000.
Yeah. So it's probably 10 times.
It was probably 10%.
Oh, wow. It just seems so high.
Yeah, well, you know, when you're dealing with big numbers, percentages get big.
Right, right.
So I'll show. I'll show my sunshine tie.
We needed that today. It was so cold. Um, what was I going to say? Um, they were, they were also saying on NPR that New York has plateaued with their numbers. And that sort of sets the pace for the rest of the country. So they're thinking that we're finally hitting a plateau.
Yeah.
And you know, if you look at the numbers from South Africa, it went up very fast and then it went straight back down very fast. So I'm just so hopeful that this turns around soon.
Yeah, that would be, that would be lovely if that happened.
Yeah.
I have the codes in case you need them, the username and password. Do you have those?
No, yeah, I logged on. I started the meeting.
Is that how, I mean, I mean, I don't know.
That's how I was, that's how I was Tony when you signed on. That's why it looks like his name.
So that, so, I mean, I don't know anything. Chris gave me this and said, if you need it, you got it. Bblair@mahout.org.
And then it's nine, 01908.
Uh, the funny thing is Bobby Blair hasn't worked, Bobby Joe Blair hasn't worked for the town in about two years.
I wonder if Richard Andrews is Mr. Andrew. Is that his son's name?
What's, what's the name?
You know how in the waiting room it says Richard Andrews? Do you know if Kevin's, one of his sons is named Richard?
Uh, no, but I mean, you can turn them on and turn them off again.
Yeah, that's all right. I can always wait until Lauren and Patty and Beth. I know Beth is historically late. So Lauren, Lauren, once Lauren and Patty are in here, I can always start letting people in. You guys are doing good so far?
Pardon me?
You guys are feeling good?
Personally?
Yeah.
Yeah, I go, no, I I have an, an N95 and a surgical black mask on top of it.
Right, that's good for you.
And, you know, I feel stupid, but the, the last thing, and I, I test every time I'm here. I, I, today I didn't even do a rapid. I did a PCR. I, I went into a pool. Uh, just because I can't bring it home with Joyce's immune system.
No, I know. No, I know.
Uh, if I test positive, that means, you know, I'm not going to go home for a week.
So the pool testing is available for staff too?
Yep.
That's so awesome.
Yeah.
How, how long does it take to get the pool tests back?
Two days.
Oh, that's good.
Which is the reason that if you're, are in a positive pool, that's why you do the rapid.
Yeah.
Because you, the, it makes no sense to have somebody who's positive in the building for two days while you wait for the next test.
Right.
You can 15 minutes get them out.
Right.
Um, we also realized finally why we were getting such crazy results. Um, and we should have thought about this. I, I was talking to Debbie, Deb Murphy today. Um, we were allowing peo-, kids who had had the virus to test. And we were getting lingering positives.
Oh.
And so now we, we've, we, we eliminate anyone who has tested positive.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
Because we were getting positives with the, uh, PCR and then negatives with her, and then, and vice versa. And now, now we got a much better under control.
Hello, everybody.
Hey, Patty.
How are you guys?
How are you?
Good.
Everything's best. And Lauren just messaged me. So Michelle's not coming tonight. Uh, John is sick, so.
I hope he's okay.
Yeah. Hi, Beth.
Hey, everybody. Nice, happy new year. Nice to see everybody.
Happy new year. Hi, Lauren.
So I was just telling Patty, so Michelle's not gonna be joining because, um, John's at home sick. And she's taking care of him. So I think we're, we're here. I'm gonna admit everybody.
I don't know if you can hear me, but I can't hear you guys, so I'm gonna.
Oh.
I don't know.
I can, I can hear you.
I can hear you. Maybe your audio is on the wrong thing.
How about now?
Looks like she's still.
Lauren is now muted. I can see it.
I can see it too.
Oh, yeah.
Now you're muted.
Can whoever the host is.
Yeah, I'm asking her to unmute.
Oh.
I can't unmute her myself.
All right.
Lauren, can you hear us?
Still can't hear anything, I don't think. I did.
Oh, there we go.
There goes. We can, we can hear you.
No, I think she, I think the problem wasn't us hearing her. Can you hear us now?
I know I can. Thank you. John unplugged and plugged something back in and that worked.
The old turn it, turn it off, turn it back on. The old turn it, turn it off, turn it back on.
Yeah, I don't know what that was, but hi.
All right.
Madam Chair, how are we handling the minutes?
Oh, good point.
Thank you.
Uh, Lauren, you must have heard. So Michelle's not joining the meeting because uh. Okay, um. So.
I can do them if I can find a link. Uh, hold on a sec. If you want, whatever people would like.
Yeah, whomever would like to take minutes, that'd be great. Do you want? Do you want me to send you the most recent minutes and Word doc- document form?
I am, that would be great. I have it only in Google Doc form.
Whatever, whatever is easiest for you. I have.
I can just do it from this, I think.
Okay.
I'm just opening it up as we speak. Most anyone else just loves to take minutes, but I'm happy to do it.
That's great.
All right.
All right, I'm gonna let everybody in. Um.
The horde?
Yes, there's a lot of people. Okay.
Wow.
Yep, it's busy meeting. Um, oh, there we go.
Gina, if you do have a Word document form, that would be great. The way that the um, the document opened that I have access to, it's. It's not in a great format.
Okay, let me just find it for you. Um. Uh, this should come through as a Word document. Anything, everybody, just give us one minute. We have to. It's the Gmail, Lauren.
It is.
You just have to delegate somebody to take minutes. That wasn't the last one, but it was. Hey. Is that good?
It hasn't come through quite yet, but I'm sure that I can catch up if you want to get started.
Oh, all right. Good evening, everyone. I'll call the school committee meeting from January eleventh order at seven oh six. And if we could all stand and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
The flag, the flag of the United States of America. Intended to be public, for which stands one nation, under a banner indivisible. With liberty, justice, and. Lauren, are you all set? Okay, great. Um, if, if I could have somebody make a motion to approve the. Regular school committee meeting minutes from December fourteenth. There's no discussion regarding the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting on December fifteenth.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. And I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Caris. And all in favor of approving the minutes as written, Ms. Caris, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Sherlock, myself. Motion passes. Uh, Mr. Parentozzi, would you like to walk us through the um bills for tonight's meeting?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, the invoices for approval at the school committee meeting on January eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. Are dominated by the first payment to the town of Swam Scott for our seventh through twelfth grade students. This as a reminder is general education students and does not include transportation. The amount is five hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty-five cents. The rest of the bills are very typical. Uh. We have Henry Dembowski, who is a trainer for the Collins program. Uh, our special education services in a variety of ways, the consortium, landmark school. Uh, some trainings. We, we also have funds for our two bus companies. So Madam Chair, without belaboring the point, I would respectfully request a member of the school committee to make a motion to approve. The bill roll in the amount of five hundred eighty-one thousand, two hundred ninety-one dollars and thirty-six cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the bill roll dated January eleventh, two thousand twenty-two in the amount of five hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-six cents.
I second that motion.
All in favor of approving the bill roll as written, Ms. Caris, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Sherlock and myself. Motion carries. Uh, so we'll move on to old business. Uh, Mr. Parentozzi, would you like to give us a COVID nineteen update, please?
Uh, I would. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Uh, it's a very lengthy report. Because as you know, the condition of relative to COVID is um. Different than our his historic reports. We have been doing remarkably well. Uh, I will continue to use the same pattern that I have used in the past. Um. The town data is as follows. In the eleven days in January, there have been fifty-four positive cases. Currently in the town of the hot, there are thirty active cases. Uh, I would like to uh. State that last year in January, for the entire month, there were fifty-seven cases. So in eleven days, we have virtually the same number of cases in the, in the town of the hot as we had. Uh, for the entire month last year. Uh, the December data is similar. Uh, for December two thousand twenty, the town had fifty-one cases. And in two thousand twenty-one in December, we had seventy-nine, a significant increase. The um, school data is similar. Uh, but a little bit different. Uh, it seems like we're past the worst of it. And I'll explain what I mean. Um, from the vacation time to today. So our data incorporates a piece of December. Because what the nurses have been dealing with is students who were either had the COVID nineteen transmitted. In December during vacation or came back. And tested positive. So rather than trying to artificially put January first as a date, we're ju- we just took all of them and put them together. So we've had twenty-five positive student cases. That's fifteen percent of our student population. The good news is only five are active today. That's what he mean is we're over the hump. Uh, we seem to be going down, down the hill, which is really good. We have had twenty-one close contacts identified between sometime in the vacation and today. None of the close contacts are active today. So that's forty-six cases, twenty-five positive, twenty-one close, close contacts. That's about twenty-nine to, that's about twenty-nine percent of our student population. So that's high. And that probably reflects the vacation. And the um. Interactions that occurred during the vacation. The staff, uh, we had four as a five o'clock. Uh, unfortunately, I was just communicated the information that one more staff member is active, just got tested. So that's five. So that means we have two active cases. Three have returned. Uh, the one who, who was active ear- early in the day, when I put the data together, will return uh next week. And I'm not sure about the one I just found out about. We have two symptomatic staff members. That uh, the status at this time is unknown. So it could be a non-COVID illness that is in the list of the uh symptoms. Or we, we may be informed that they test positive. We have had six staff close contacts. None of them are active as of, as of today. Once again, demonstrating that we're kind of over the hump, we hope. So um, our nursing staff and our CIC staff have been monitoring since we got back. Uh, after the winter break, fifty-eight cases. Uh, that's significantly more than at any time in the past. Um, I also would like to address a concern that was brought to our attention last week and uh we did some research. Um. After a large number of warnings about the way a mask was being worn by students. Uh, at certain times, particularly when the students were not maintaining their appropriate distance. Uh, we were asking uh parents and guardians to pick up students. Uh, unless there's an um, a confounding variable, for example, a variable would be a student. Test positive and um, or is a close contact. Uh, we won't be doing that in the future. Uh, I communicated with many of my colleagues and found, uh, and I spoke to a couple of parents and found that uh. There are alternatives and we don't want to send students home with us. We have to and we may not have to. So what we're going to be asking is um. Obviously reminding students repeatedly and continuously. Uh, reminding them, I was in classrooms today, reminding kids about their masks um and about their physical distancing. And we will be asking students to either double mask or wear a faceplate if they were, are having some self-discipline issues. In terms of remembering uh about their mask. Uh, that is the recommendation that uh I researched and it is the recommendation of the D E S A and we will be following that in the future. Um, I do want to make sure the school committee members are aware that um. The one, the very small number of cases where students did go home, they were not suspended. The principal called the parent or guardian and asked them to uh take the student home for more of a, a timeout or a break. As long as we have the staff, we would, we will be doing that inside the school so that the student stays in school. But there could be uh elements of um separation that we would have to do. If students can't remember to keep A, their mask on or their faceplates, if it comes to that, and to keep the physical distance. Um, so I want to thank the parents who gave us input and um I want to thank my colleagues for their uh. Their opinions and of course, I want to thank Mr. Andrews for his flexibility. Um, a couple of things are in the packet. And, and please interrupt me at any time.
I just have, actually, I have a quick question. Um, and first I want to thank the nursing staff. And the um COVID support staff that have been tremendously busy since our winter break. All of their hard work in contact tracing and keeping track of all these students. Um. One of the things that came up in this discussion about masks and um. You know, what the, what the, you know, process will be for students that are having a difficult time wearing a mask appropriately is that our current protocol in place. Is uh the code, protocol that was voted upon when we returned to school last year. Uh, which included that students that were having a difficult time maintaining their mask would be sent home because we had a remote option last year. So my question is, um, is that a protocol that we should formally amend and vote upon? Since obviously remote learning is not an option this year and we don't want to be sending students home. So is that something that you feel like needs to be formally voted upon since it's a protocol in place?
All right. Madam Chair, I think the school committee could make a motion, any member of the school could, could make a motion and the school committee could vote on basically anything it so chooses. The plan that was voted was the reopening plan.
Right.
After we had been in all remote learning. And that was both a requirement of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and obviously. A uh, an agreement with the Collective Bargaining Association. Uh, we are at a different point now, so I don't think it's necessary. Uh, but if the school committees choose us to do so. That, that would be fine.
And Madam Chair, if I may chime in here, um, remote learning is still an option. Um, but it, the difference is that if we went schoolwide to remote learning, it wouldn't count as a school day. Uh, so um, we can still offer remote learning, um, but it, it can't be a school-wide. School day. Um, and so, you know, theoretically, we could still have a student at home learning. Um, and again, as Superintendent Parentozzi mentioned, you know, that's not our intention. We don't want to do that. Um, but remote learning isn't. Not available. It's available, but not as a school-wide effort to educate kids.
But it seems, if I understand correctly, it seems like the reopening plan that we voted upon was a plan that enabled us to reopen. And at this point, that plan itself is not something we need to adhere to in a strict manner, Mr. Parentozzi. So. You know, this enabled us to start that school year and have a plan to, in order to do so, but per the rules as I, as I understand them. You know, something like a protocol for dealing with mask non-compliance is something that's under the control of the administration at this time. And wouldn't require a vote by the school committee. Is that correct?
That, Madam Chair, through you, that is correct. But uh, you know, I think it's important for the members of the school committee to also understand that um. We've amended our position, um, even though at no time did we vigorously intend students to go home. Uh, you know, as an administrator, you have this, this balance that you're always doing between individual rights and common good. And uh, what we've decided is that we will fall on the, the side of making sure students. Stay in school whenever possible. And uh, it's interesting that we're using the concept of remote learning. So it uh, and. Mr. Andrews and I even talked about a wrinkle on that, that if a student was having a tremendous difficult time being in a classroom. Keeping the mask on, keeping the physical distance, we could actually use technology in the school to keep the student at a. More of a distance and yet not, they would still be in school. So that they would not have to go home. And that would be, again, after many levels of inter- intervention.
It, it sounds like what you've come up with for an alternative plan is, you know, is really impressive and great that you're already thinking so quickly. You're so receptive to ideas from the community. So thank you very much for already brainstorming and coming up with alternatives so quickly. And thank you for, I know the original plan was devised. You know, only in the interest of safety and protecting all involved. Um, I know intentions were good all along. I think it was great when it was devised and I think. You know, being flexible and moving and thinking creatively about new ways to do it is fantastic. So thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Uh, Madam Chair, continuing, in your packet labeled four A, you have three sheets of paper that um. Really describe the um guidelines for the three protocols, A, B, and C that are now in place. And uh, I know it's hard to believe that. This is an attempt at, at being simple, but it is. Um. It's, it's a pretty complex thing that we're taking part in. And the fact that the D S E has to put it into a multi-colored, three-page grid. Uh. Leads us to believe how complex it really is. And what, and I would share the accolades that were given to our medical and nursing staff. For handling it so well and keeping, keeping our staff and our, our students um relatively safe and, and in school. But I thought it was important for you to see that the, the pathways. Um, and the nurse has copies of these. I sent a copy of this to a, a parent today who has some questions. So we will continue to um. Send this out. This is posted on the D E S E website and um, if the school committee thinks it's. You know, I'm, I'm kind of immune to what makes sense with COVID nineteen right now. So if the members of the school committee think it would pay to put it on our website, we can do that. You know, I look at it, and I don't know whether it's an improvement or it's just so confounding that it's, it's a negative. Especially the page three, it's, I look at that and I just go, whoa.
I think focusing or posting a link to it could be helpful for people.
Okay.
I, I just because it's a changing situation too, so if it's a link to the CDC website, you know, recommendations, that would be most useful, that way, as it's changing, we can have the most up-to-date information.
I also, yeah. I also, I think it, I think it is important to post it. I think it's important for our constituencies of parents, teachers, students, where that may be the case to understand where, from, from where we are developing policy, because they are not immediately privy to all that, that we are in the public school districts superintendent's are. And so I think it collectively helps give context for folks that is so needed in times where we need to be more transparent rather than less.
Okay, so what I, I'll do is I'll ask Mr. Andrews tomorrow to post those three pages and also the facts. That's the next item in your packet, that on January sixth, the, the, that the scenarios were released, that the isolation and quarantine is now five days. And this, when we post it, we'll have two links in it for more information itself. And then the last item in your packet is the January tenth determination by the Commissioner of Education regarding the masks, this goes into much more detail than the fact sheet. In case anybody would like this, once again, a lot of these don't pertain to us, for example, the student athlete, the high, a lot of this is for high schools. And it also doesn't pertain to us because a lot, a large part of this two-page document is devoted to the eighty percent detail for older students. That, you know, we, obviously, at this point, we can't come close to because of the age of our students. So the extension for mask requirements is now till February twenty-eighth. And the commissioner has obviously looking at this in six to seven-week hunks. So we will know what the next six to seven weeks after, you know, in March, will look like at some point in the future. Another new change is an interesting one. And in terms of our state, I'll start with our state. For a student or a staff member in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Massachusetts to be determined to be quote "fully vaccinated" at this time, the individual would need one J and shot of J and J vaccine or two of Pfizer or the Madera. The D P H and CDC are stating a phrase that quote "vaccination up to date," unquote. And to be in that category, the individual needs to have either one J and J, two Pfizer or one, and Madera and a booster shot. But that's not where we are now as a state, even though that's the recommendation. Now, what typically happens is the CDC comes out with something like this, the D P H follows, and then down the road, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education follows suit. So why is this important? Well, right now, the five-day quarantine and isolation requirement that just went into place, reducing it from ten or seven, does not require the booster shot in the Commonwealth. That's why it's important. It's important for you to realize and parents and guardians and staff members to realize that it is likely that the booster shot down the road, particularly for adults or individuals over twelve, will be the requirement for that reduced quarantine or isolation. But right now, just the vaccines in the Commonwealth meet the requirement for the reduced quarantine and isolation. And I hope I didn't confuse you.
I think that's only for people who are eligible for a booster, so if they're two months out from the Johnson and Johnson, or five months out from Moderna or Pfizer, but I mean, I, I could be wrong. Like, if you have just gotten your second shot a month ago, I think you're still considered up to date with your vaccines, with your, with your COVID vaccine because you're not eligible to get a booster yet.
That is correct. That is correct, if the, if the required waiting period has not passed, the theory is, I assume, you, you lady, you would know much better than I, these, that your immunity is high, and it hasn't begun to dwindle yet, but I believe that period of time is five weeks now. I, it, it used to be ninety days. But the important thing, I think, for us is to know that if a staff member or a student who is age-appropriate has had their vaccines, then their period of time for isolation is going to continue to be reduced until further notice.
As long as they're two weeks after.
Yeah. Okay, let me give you an update on the pool testing, because this is the best news we have. Every Tuesday, we do what's now called routine safety testing. So PCR tests are given. The technician puts a group in a box, the box becomes the pool. It's sent out, two days later, the results come back, and if a, one of those in the box is positive, then everyone in that box does a Binex Now rapid test. What we're trying to do is identify the individuals who are asymptomatic, who have COVID-19 at a high level, so that it's transmittable. We have on Tuesday, the maximum number of students who could be here is a hundred and fifty-two. The reason it's different is that ten students who are in preschool don't, aren't signed up for Tuesday. So that's why it's not the hundred and sixty-two number. Ninety-six participate in the routine safety testing. Twenty are excluded because of recent COVID-positive results. So you add the ninety-six and the twenty, you get a hundred and sixteen, which means that seventy-five percent of our students are participating in the routine safety testing, which is outstanding. I don't believe I mentioned this, if I do, if I did, I, I know the chair and I were talking about this, and I don't believe I, I said this generally. Once someone is tested positive, they are eliminated from the pool or from doing the rapid Binex Now for ninety days because of two possibilities. One is that they would test positive and would throw the pool into unnecessary testing. And two, there is a belief of general immunity and low viral load during those ninety days.
I just have a question, so if the pool comes back positive and the antigen testing comes back negative, remind me what the protocol is, just because antigen testing is less sensitive?
There's two possibilities, one is the parents and guardians who are in control of their own minor child can decide to have a, another rapid test done, or the student, and we would test every day. That's the preferred methodology, and then the next Tuesday, they would take another PCR. That way, we're, we're making sure, to some degree or to the best degree we can, of the safety for that student and obviously for others.
But the group isn't sent home just because you can't identify who the positive person is?
That's correct.
Okay, just making sure.
That's right, we would not send the entire pool of students home. And I want to remind the members of the school committee that we are interspersing some adults in those, those pods. For example, I put mine in one of the pods today. So I definitely don't want to go home Thursday. And it takes two days for those results to come in.
Mr. Parentozzi, if you don't mind, do we, how are we doing with, do we, with numbers of rapid tests for the students where that matters if we're, you know, trying to figure out the pool or another need for the rapid test, or are we doing that?
My understanding is that after we identified the students who had tested positive in the last, recently, and eliminated them, then the test results were becoming much more stable.
Okay.
Okay.
And we have a staff member from C I C here, we have plenty of rapid tests, staff members can ask. We have parents bringing their children to the far door by the primary playground and going right in up the steps to the testing site. And all of this, of course, is being managed by our incredible school nurse and our public health nurse, so there really isn't an answer for everybody, because, you know, a student may have a symptom, and the nurses decide that it's not a strong symptom, so they may decide to leave the school, the student in school and to do the rapid testing, as compared to somebody who has multiple, a student who had multiple symptoms that are classic for COVID-19, that would have a different response. I want to impress upon our, our viewers, both parents, guardians, and faculty, that it's crucially important that our, our individuals in school maintain their physical distance. Because the close contact identification does not differentiate masked or unmasked, it's really about distance. And it, it's very difficult for the students, you know, we, anyone who's an educator understands, the kids want to be with one another, they want to be close to each other. In the pre-K age group, we actually put the dividers up because we know how hard it is for them. And I think Mr. Andrews will make a report that since the middle of last week, when he visited at the classrooms, the students are doing much, much better. And there's a variety of reasons for it, one being that it took them a couple of days to get back into the swing of things after the break. You know, they weren't wearing their masks most places, I would imagine, for, you know, almost two weeks, so there was, there was a transition period. And that's about it, I've I want to thank you for your patience, but there was
That's the update. That needed, thank you. There's no other questions from the committee, or we can move on to the LED project update?
The LED project is phase one is completed, there were two electricians here today at about five o'clock, rolling, rolling out the last small adjustments, there may be some small adjustments made, but basically, our, our hallways, most, the classrooms, our gymnasium, a lot of the offices now have LED lights. You will hear later today that I'm going to adjust the budget because I expect to spend less money on electricity. Once again, I want to remind our viewers, because the school committee is well aware of this, this came without cost to the taxpayers because we use the Green Communities grant money to pay the local share. We got a grant from National Grid, and it's just a wonderful thing.
Great.
And the light is better. It's really amazing. Madam Chair, the the next item for D is the discussion about opening the facility for community use.
You, you skipped over the budget.
Oh, I'm sorry, I sure did. Thank you. So item four C is the third draft of the two thousand twenty-three budget. What you will see, bottom right hand of the fourth page, fifth page, excuse me, fifth page, is that the bottom line is now ten thousand dollars less than it was the last time you saw it. The change is in the the electric cost, which is on the fourth page near the top under school utilities. That number I dropped from forty-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to thirty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars. A, a drop of, of about a significant drop, because I expect due to the LED project that we will spend less money on electricity. And I continue to fine-tune that. It will help immensely when the collective bargaining groups reach agreement with the school committee, that will allow me to really fine-tune it, but until that time happens, it's, it's going to be difficult for me to really focus down the way I would like to, when we have a contract in effect for the following year.
Thank you. Regarding the next item, the facility use, I'd be interested in the other committee members' thoughts on tabling this, at least until after public comment, to hear if there's any feedback from the community. That's a great idea. Okay.
Agreed.
So we can discuss it under new business.
And Madam Chair, through you, the labeled four D in your packet.
E. Oh.
Four D, you have a backup for that discussion.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll reference it when we discuss it.
Okay, moving on to four E, the preschool program, the E E C vouchers, we are fully a voucher site now. The process for parents and guardians signing up for vouchers is now known by my office and the social worker, so if any parent has a child in our preschool program, and they believe they qualify to, for a voucher based on their income level, they would, please feel free to contact us, and we'll be happy to point them in the right direction. We don't actually have the ability to us, do anything to submit the vouchers, the parents and guardians have to do that, but we can certainly can support them and help them.
Is that something that's, you know, that we could post on the Johnson School website under preschool, that way the community could be aware if they were looking into the Johnson School?
Oh, I think we could do something better than that, and I believe we've already done it once, but let's do it again, we can email the preschool parents.
And I'm more, I'm more also thinking about parents that might be interested in the preschool that haven't enrolled their students because of the cost.
That's a good point.
Right.
Madam Chair, if I may ask Mr. Andrews a question, I believe If Madam Chair, if I may ask Mr. Andrews a question, I believe, uh, Ms. April has a list of all the age appropriate students that we send the packets to.
That's correct. You get that from the census from the town hall.
So we can really focus that.
In addition, I'd be happy to post the documents. We have forms that need to be filled out and it's easy to put those up on the website. So that's a great idea.
Yeah, I, I, but I think focusing on the parents who have children of that age, uh, because if I was a parent at home, not, I've decided not to send my child, uh, for a variety of reasons. Uh, there may not be a reason for me to, to look for a posting, uh, whereas if I receive something, uh, I probably would be better informed. So we can do that.
That's great.
Thank you.
And then the hand sanitizer?
I checked today. We have submitted our documentation to the, uh, regional grant, uh, manager. And we're just waiting to find out what's happening. Once again, uh, the, um, infamous hand sanitizer, we purchased about $180 worth of it and it was never used because, uh, we checked the contents of the, on the label and determined that it was not meeting the, uh, CDC requirements for hand sanitizer. Uh, and we're supposedly getting, uh, or the grant will be getting its money back.
Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Uh, so we can move on to public comment and correspondence. Um, so during this section, members of the community are welcome to, uh, make a comment. Um, if you could put your name and address into the chat, the addresses as a form of record. Being as it's a public meeting and, um, you could either, you know, have a, post a question in the chat or if you'd like to make a statement verbally, please, uh, note that. And I see Sean Roberts. Um, Sean, if you could just post your, um, address in the chat, um, he asked if we could put the voucher program on the town website as well. Um, and then Jen McCarthy, um, Jen, do you want to make a comment verbally? Great. Thank you.
First of all, my list has grown, grown since I've joined this meeting. So, um, the facility use, I do think it should be open for, um, town use. Secondly, the vouchers, I agree with Sean, should be listed on the school website and the town website because people who are looking to move into town, this could be something that, um, draws them maybe into, you know, our community, knowing that our school has some additional resources for support. And then my main reason for being here tonight was the mask mandate that went into, um, heavy duty enforcement last week. And I'm glad to hear that children will not be, um, sent home. I do have some notes that I wrote down and some of them, I've been trying to tweak as the meeting's been going, but I would read, um, what I have. So that my thoughts are just put on the record. So, um, my, my notes say, and some of this is obviously a mute point now because of the change in policy, but at a time when Governor Baker and Dussie is saying how important it is for children to be present in school, it makes no sense to be sending children home with difficulties keeping their masks on. Um, I am also thinking that wearing masks properly and staying your, in your own spaces have not been fully enforced since September, maybe at the Johnson School, because we wouldn't be having such issues now in January. Um, and, and I know I'm a classroom teacher and we all get lazy about staying your seat, put your mask up, things like that. But I think if enforced, um, fully from the beginning, we wouldn't necessarily be in the situation that we are with some children. It seems unfair to basically overnight expect children to understand the rules and change their ways if it's something that hasn't been fully enforced to this point. I am a third grade teacher and I get that we're all trying to keep everyone safe. Consequences of not wearing your mask properly seem harsh for a five, six, seven and eight-year-old. I have students that I need to remind eight to 10 times a day. Is it aggravating? Yeah, it is. Do I deal with it as a classroom teacher? I do. And sometimes it's, it's simple. It's just making eye contact with that student and pointing to my nose and then their mask goes right back up. To me, it's totally unacceptable to be removing students for this. And in the hunt, I would assume that many of the children are vaccinated, unlike the city children that I work with. I also am wondering if accommodations for children on IEPs were taken into account. Some children will need more frequent mask breaks and movement breaks. Maybe this team needs to reconvene to add amendments to the current IEPs. We know that children on IEPs don't learn the same way and often take many, many times to understand something. Um, I did reach out to Mr. Andrews and he, um, wrote back me. And I thank you for that, Mr. Andrews. And I did ask, you know, was this taken into consideration? And he said that they were looking into and have already identified alternatives. Tonight I'm hearing about those alternatives such as double masks, faceplates and, um, being removed from the classroom and using technology to still get the lesson. Have you ever tried to double mask for six hours? Because this school year I've tried to do it and it's made me physically sick. I also being a teacher that taught remotely for over a year, I can tell you it does not work, especially for children with learning disabilities. And as a teacher, this adds another whole level of difficulty now that they will have to turn their computer on, log on to Zoom or whatever platform you use and make sure that child is involved. And I would also like to know, is there available staff at the Johnson School to monitor children that have to be removed from a classroom and put into an alternative setting to use the technology? As a caregiver of children, uh, as a part-time or assistant caregiver of children in the Johnson School that are on IEPs, I want to know and should be notified. I feel that parents are made, oh, I feel that parents should be made aware if their children will have alternative consequences and/or modifications. And I believe every child's guardian on an IEP should be filled in about those alternatives. Also, I was reading today that the CDC says face mouth, uh, faceplates and face shields are not recommended and they're not effective. We have to remember that we work with children and in education, it is never one size fits all. The superintendent even said it tonight that we don't have the same answers for everyone. To conclude, I, um, I am all for everyone being safe. I fully support children and adults in the building to be wearing masks. And it is, um, I'm sorry. And I do want to end by thanking everybody involved for working so hard to keep everyone, the students and staff, safe. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Thanks for those comments. Um, next I have a question from Debbie Yu. Her, um, address is in the chat. Um, Debbie, did you want to unmute and make a, ask your question out loud?
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, I have a few questions. Um, so it's kind of shocking to me to hear, to tune in and hear that there's 25 cases. So I don't think we were notified of all of those cases, maybe just handfuls. So love to understand the criteria for the parents being notified of positive cases within the school. Um, also with the new variant, want to know like what new measures are in place to keep kids safe in school? Are we keeping them further apart than we planned to at the beginning of the year? Um, anything else other than being stricter with masks, which is great, um, because I know that I hear from my kids, particularly my son, that, you know, there's a lot of issues in class with people. He was on mass patrol and he told me that he couldn't really pay attention to class because he had to remind the other children so much during the, the lesson to pull their masks up. Um, and then also is that, so my last question is, um, are we redefining close contacts with the new variant? Um, how are we thinking about that? Um, because I would assume that everybody in the class is a co, close contact if somebody's positive, right? Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, I'll, I'll start with the last one. Uh, close contacts are identified by the DESC and the DPH as individuals who are in contact with each other for a cumulative, a cumulative 15 minutes with or without a mask. Which is why we attempt to keep students a minimum of three feet apart, uh, six feet when they don't have their masks off in the, um, cafeteria, which is why we have desks in the cafeteria now all facing in one direction instead of the tables. What I just stated is for indoor spaces.
Okay. So I don't know if I could talk again. I was just wondering, just to clarify, I was wondering just because of the new variant, like has anything changed with that in terms of finding out close contact? Cause it seems like it's more contagious.
I could speak to that. The CDC has not changed the definition of close contact, um, in light of the new variant.
Okay. Thanks Lauren.
Yeah. And in terms of the question about knowing the staff who, um, have tested positive, uh, the letters that have gone home since, uh, vacation, all identified staff without identifying, um, the staff member to protect their HIPAA rights. Uh, I would like to remind the, um, parents, guardians and our visitors that we have a lot of, of staff members who work much fewer, a, a lighter schedule than Monday through Friday. So, for example, myself, if I tested positive on Thursday, hopefully I won't. Uh, when my, uh, PCR test comes back, because I'm fully vaccinated and have had a booster, I only miss one day of work on next Tuesday and I'll be back the following Thursday. So it's possible that if a, a staff member, and we don't identify the type of staff member because we're so small, I mean, we, we can't identify people. We have to protect their privacy rights. So there's a lot of staff members who work, uh, irregular shifts. So, uh, it's likely that some of those identified as positives had minimal contact with students in the school here.
Uh, if, if I may add, some of the cases that you, that we are mentioning tonight in the numbers, they weren't, we didn't include letters because they were never in school.
That's right.
So if they were abs, if they've been absent at home and positive, we don't send a letter home about every case. It's just about cases of students who are in school who have a potential for transmitting it. Does that answer your question?
Just to be clear, I, uh, and Mr. Andrews, if I, if I have this incorrect, please correct me. We're, because of the vacation.
Yeah.
That's the element that would be different for this particular timeframe.
And also for parents who are being extra cautious and they notice their student has, uh, symptoms, they may be sending home, they may be testing, they would be testing negative for five days. And then they test positive for a certain day and now it's already been the time period. So, um, the letters refer to students who are in school and positive. Don't refer to students who are at home for the extension of the time and positive.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, that is exactly what I was asking. Why do not, I was not asking what staff member had or for any identification. I was just wondering about the difference between the 25 and the letters that were sent home. Thank you.
Right.
And I had one more thing on that. Um, uh, Mr. Parent Talty and Ms. Lane. Um, just that being, um, in my, in my sort of non-resident, non-school committee life, uh, um, I'm also a public, uh, public school district leader and we, um, we are seeing dramatic rises because of the break in nearly all districts that I'm connected to, um, which is a lot of districts in Massachusetts. Um, and so the rise in the hunt over, um, the break is actually not as significant as some that I've seen. And that there is a rise near almost everywhere that I've talked to. So, um, it is something that, that is not, certainly is far from unique here.
Um, and then Sean, our, who's address is in the chat? I know that you, uh, put in your address, but it looks like you have a question or want to make a statement if you'd like to unmute.
Yeah. Um, thank you Gina. Um, I, I wasn't on the first part of the meeting. If, if somebody could just kind of fill me in on what it sounds like there's some additional cases that haven't been reported. And, and the other thing, and I spoke to, uh, to Mr. Andrews about this is, um, you know, one of my biggest concerns with the, the, the mask, you know, enforcement was, you know, the potential eroding of the, the student teacher relationship. You know, if there's, you know, if there's a student that might think that the teacher's out for him or something like that, it, it might erode that relationship, you know, and, and that's, that was my biggest fear with, with that, um, with the mandate. But he addressed that with me and, you know, I, I was fine with that, you know, you know, with our conversation. So, um, but yeah, somebody could just go over the, the, the numbers real quick. If it's, if it's something that's easy to do, that'd be great. Thanks.
Um, I guess that's me. So, uh, Sean, 54 positive cases from January 1st to January 11th in the town, uh, which is higher than, uh, which is about equal to the entire month of January last year. Our data at General Johnson Elementary School includes vacation because, uh, the nurse and I were monitoring this during vacation with the public health department. So we've had 25 positive cases of students, uh, through today, starting at the vacation break. Uh, 21 close contacts, but we're over the hump. We now only have five active cases out of the 25 positive and zero active cases from the close contacts. And that's all students. Uh, we've had, uh, we had another staff member who tested positive today. So we've had five staff members from the, uh, beginning of vacation to now. We only had one active case. Um, now we have two. Uh, we have two symptomatic adults that, whose status is unknown at this time. In other words, they had, uh, symptoms that could be COVID, but the test has, hasn't been taken or it's been out. So there, and we have had six adult close contacts with zero active cases now. So the critical thing for tonight is to recognize that we have five active student cases of, of testing positive, zero close contact students, two staff members tested, who have tested positive, zero close contacts at the present time. And we have been monitoring, uh, 58 individual cases.
Thank you.
And I, uh, I want to make sure that there's no misunderstanding, um, simply because of the way it could be heard. There are no cases that we're not reporting. There are cases that don't get reported to parents if it has nothing to do with school. And that again is closely related to the vacation period. So the fact that these numbers have dramatically dropped now leads me to believe and leads, uh, Deb Murphy and Cheryl to believe that it was related to the vacation activities as compared to school. In my opinion, for whatever it's worth, school continues to be an extremely safe place. Sean brings up an important point, you know, we're try, we try to remind kids in an extremely positive way. Ms. McCarthy mentioned eight to 10 times a day, uh, for some of our students, uh, that's a very low number. For most of our students, that's a high number. But we continue to work with them and we will continue to learn as we go through this. trying to keep our kids at school, trying to get them educated as best we can and working with the parents and the health experts, because they're really the people that we rely on. As I said earlier, I expect that the definition of up-to-date vaccination or quote "fully vaccinated" unquote is going to change and we will keep everybody informed. But we're learning a lot with the, excuse me, the routine safety testing. We really are. And the CIC rapid tests are really very helpful for identifying asymptomatic people. You probably have heard that the governor has bought millions of rapid tests. Before that announcement was made, Mr. Tony Bartella and I were working on a plan, which we still have in place, where the school would participate with the larger community, that every resident would get multiple kits to have them at home so that they could test themselves. This is in addition to what we do at school. So we're, we're continuing to move forward and grow and learn and hopefully keep our kids in school and all of us stay healthy.
If you don't mind, I'd just like to tag on to, you know, when we talk about case numbers and the recent rise, just as Ms. Anderson had alluded to earlier, it, this rise that we've seen in Nahant and within the Johnson School, it is not isolated to the town, it's not isolated to the school, and it's also not isolated to schools in general. Now, the surge in cases has affected the population as a whole, not, not just schoolchildren. So I think that there are probably many factors that are independent of school that led to the surge that we have noted and that has affected our numbers within the school itself. And we're seeing that at the hospital, we're seeing that in the state, we're seeing it in the country. So just to kind of step back and see that, you know, the surge in numbers really does seem to correspond with the surge that we're seeing on a much more large scale. There's another comment in the chat from Ruthie Merrill, and if you could just add in your address. I work in Chelsea Schools, we've seen a surge there. And then another comment from Leona Deloitte. No question for me, just want to say thank you to the school committee and staff for all their efforts. And she added in her address. And I want to echo that and say thank you to the school staff and administration for all the efforts and diligence in all of these protocols and keeping the students safe. And also, you know, for the community members for providing feedback today. And I have confidence that the school administration will continue to take these recommendations into consideration so that we can fine tune the protocols to best serve all of the, you know, student and school community. So thank you for everything.
You're welcome.
We do have one correspondence that was given in writing from John Locke. He actually didn't provide his address. I don't know the protocols on that when it's written communication. But he sent an email to the school administration and to the school community, committee in general regarding reopening the school. And I'm not going to read the whole email, but it was basically outlining the non-basketball program that's historically been available for grades one through six. And it's a program that's available to the community, not just for, you know, students at the Johnson School. And that, you know, that he reflected that they struggle with weighing the pros and cons of the activities for indoor recreational sports. They believe they have the resources and volunteers necessary to hold the clinic and the gymnasium, and they would be compliant with the standards of masking for all. He reflected that they don't have resources to develop a COVID mitigation protocol independently, but they would adhere to the guidelines that we have in place and reflected that it's not so much a request, but a point of consideration when considering reopening the school. I don't see any other comments in the chat. Have any other school committee members had any correspondence from the community that they'd like to share separately? W. shared in the chat, basketball is one of the most contagious sports. Seeing no further communication, I'm actually going to close the chat because it's not something that we're going to continue to use.
Gina, do you mind if I just say one thing? Especially close. I just want to say that my hat on as a school committee member, I just, it, it and Jen McCarthy brought this up a little bit, but like, I'm going to say it in a different way. As educators, our school system is being asked to actually do things to keep us safe that are counter to what we know, all of us, including Mr. Parentozzi and Mr. Andrews, that are best practices. The idea of even sitting at desk facing forward, not sharing a table at lunch, not being able to collaborate closely with your peers. These are things that, that we're taught not to do as educators. And we're doing them because of the safety concerns that we also heard from public comment on this call from Debbie. You and we are trying to navigate this as best we can. And now as a parent of a kindergarten and a second grader, we parents are trying, are both fearful, real and perceived of the fear of the virus and the fear of our kids being, not having the education that we had and that we want them to have. And so just know that everybody is navigating this, I think, together with the best of intentions. Again, as a mother of a second grade mask offender, one of the largest over the last few weeks, who somehow managed to keep his mask on all the time in first grade, and it all went out the window in December, and I don't know why. I will say, as a mom, I did fall in the camp of heavy support of whatever the school wanted to do, because I am one of the people that is deeply worried about the virus. I have lupus and I also know a lot of parents that have some immunocompromised folks in their homes. I work with teachers. Ruthie, I am also a fellow person who works in Chelsea. And, and I, I work with teachers that live with their grandparents, who are, you know, 80 and 90 years old and are taking those things and watching kids not wear masks or not wear them properly and being fearful in all those ways that we shouldn't even have to deal with, but we do have to deal with it. And so I just, I just want to say thank you to everybody on the call that took the time to do this and to the staff. And I want to say that the humane and loving way that Mr. Andrews worked through this with me as a mom around my son's very frustrating fall from grace, which hopefully we now have back on track, is very appreciated. And I want to offer that as I think it is, from what I know from other parents, emblematic of the loving and caring way that teachers, staff members, and leadership are working day to day to try to figure this out. I think this is the right community choice for us and appreciate the input as a school committee member. And I also just really can't leave this meeting without saying how, how proud I am of everybody, we're not perfect, but trying to work through this well and care for our kids collectively and holistically. Thank you Gina and Mr. Parentozzi for letting me speak that.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. It's a real honor to be part of the district and to be working with you all in the committee. And Mr. Roberts made a great comment about how being tough on kids can hurt relationships. And so whenever we, we have to get to that step, we're still doing it in a loving way and trying to solve a problem.
Seeing no further comments, I will close the chat. We can move on to the superintendent's report, starting with the facility update.
Madam Chair, did you want to revisit the 4D item?
We can. I put it in new business, but we can certainly.
Why don't we, why don't we do that? Your call. Facility update. Some good news. The HVAC unit on the roof of the cafeteria is functioning. I had, when I woke up at three o'clock this morning and saw the whiteout, I went, oh my goodness. I, and you know, five o'clock this morning, I got the message, we're okay. So that's great. I also want to bring to your attention that we are waiting for the installation of two bottle filling stations which have filters in them. Today I became aware, and a member of the school committee may be very interested in this, the Massachusetts SWIG, the School Water Improvement Grant, which very recently got voted a new $2 million. And they have added water bottle filtering stations to the reasons to get a grant. So I went online and I found out I have all the paperwork in front of me, but I can't, I can't put it in until January 13th. So if anyone has anything to do with a school, that's something you may want to bring up. If your school needs water filling stations, there's a new $2 million starting on January 13. I will even give you, it's themass.gov/swig. On January 13, the application will be there. So that's good news. Just to remind the members of the school committee, that's a $7,339 item. So if we can get a grant for it, that would be wonderful. And everything else is great. The building is in much better shape than it was the last time we had temperatures like this. If you remember, we used to have freeze-ups and broken pipes and, you know, we've, we've got the building in good shape. And I want to thank Vinnie and James for doing a phenomenal job as our custodians. The Madam Chair, the next item, I have nothing to say. Material shortages and cost increases, we're holding our own. There, some things have gone up, but in, in our business right now, there seem to be enough of the items we need. The shortages seem to have dwindled. And then Madam Chair, the last item I have in my report is in your packet labeled Item 6C. You have the plan for the Professional Development Day on Friday, January 14. Really an outstanding agenda for our staff to continue to learn and grow. And I want to thank Mr. Andrews for doing your person's work in that regard.
My pleasure.
Mr. Andrews, while you're unmuted, would you like to give the principals' report?
Great segue. Thank you. And thank you for those kind words Superintendent Parentozzi. In the area of teaching and learning, I'd like to let folks know a little bit more about the Professional Development Day. The teachers will be participating, and all staff will be participating in a lockdown drill within the Nahant Police Department on our Professional Development Day. We're still not ready to have such a drill with our students, being that we'd have to gather together in a space. And so we will carry it out together as a staff and we'll walk through the procedures just as if there were kids in the building, in our own classrooms, and, and understand how that would happen should we ever need it. We'll also be taking part in a mindfulness and media presentation and interactive workshop with Middlesex Partnerships for Youth. I've invited the Swampscot Public Schools to attend and we've had some takers on that. And so I'm glad to be able to collaborate with them and understand how we can increase the amount of time students are able to focus on a task for a presentation. And we'll learn exercises about mindfulness and what students, and what we all can do to kind of be more attentive to projects that are before us and exercises that we can do to keep us tuned in in a time when so much of the things that we're seeing are bright lights and digital and on screens. We'll also review the teacher evaluation procedure and work on some of the artifacts that teachers will be submitting. And then I will be submitting to the superintendent as well on that process. We'll have a presentation from a new tool that may be available to us where we can select and upload all of our different data sources and so that we can put those together for IEP meetings, for 504 meetings, and to understand how we can best serve students using data. We're also going to have an introduction to our new public library collaboration with Sharon Hawks. She'll be visiting the school and meeting with teachers and myself to go over the lessons that she'll be doing from January through June, helping with research projects, how to cite sources, how to properly research online, and what the parts of a book are, and some students will even be able to make their own book. In addition, our paraprofessionals will be there that whole day and they'll be training with Kath Sullivan, our Adjustment Counselor, on a program called Safety Care. It's a de-escalation program that we use to help students who are in an escalated state and need support in calming down and in the most significant cases, need physical support to keep them safe. I want to let everybody know that iReady, our iReady assessment tool will be coming soon. So students are continuing with iReady. We took it in September and we'll have a second round coming up soon. And then we'll have a final run-through on the iReady assessment in May. And just for reference, this is an online tool that we're using and it's also one that Swampscot's using as well. It's by Curriculum Associates. It's a statewide, I mean, a national company that's out of Bill Ricker. In the area of the facility, I'd like to let everyone know that Wes Sam Bruce, the artist that visited us a couple of years ago and the PUD Essex Museum, have donated a number of pieces from his exhibit called Where the Questions Live. I was able to go to the museum on Saturday, pick up a number of pieces, rent a U-Haul, pull them back to the school. And today, Monday, Mr. Gagliolo helped me reassemble them. There's a few more details that need to be taken care of, but several of the students in the after-school program were already happy to explore them. They include a cubby you can climb under and read a book in and some benches that we'll have in the hallways. And they match a lot of the work that Mr. Sam Bruce did behind the school. So it's a nice, it's a nice continued collaboration in that way. In addition, we'll be making a plaque that you might see in a museum that identifies the name of the piece, the medium and the artist. So these are real art exhibits that were in a real art museum and I thought it'd be fitting to add them to our school and to support that creativity. And this is an ongoing collaboration with also the Nahant Education Foundation, who brought Wes Sam Bruce to our school a couple of years ago. Finally, I want to let you know about a couple of events that are coming up. January 18th, that's the Tuesday after Martin Luther King Day, we'll have two different assemblies, one for the upper grades and one for the lower grades, titled What's Up With Bullying? And this is also supported by the Middlesex Partnerships for Youth, which Superintendent Parentozzi has a special connection with, being the president of the organization. So thanks to the superintendent for getting us connected to MPY and bringing these fabulous programs to our school. Kath Sullivan's been working on getting What's Up With Bullying coordinated. This will be a remote program, as most of our programs have been this year, but it will be interactive and live. And then finally, I want to let everyone know that February 9th will be our preschool and kindergarten open house. It's been on the calendar and I'll be working with the Nahant Police Department to put it up on the screen that you see as you come into town so that everyone's aware that we'll be having that open house. And I'm fully expecting that to also be an online remote program, unless things change and we are inviting parents to the school. So at the current time, it's planned for a remote program and we will So at the current time, it's planned for a remote program, and we will be having that on February 9th in the evening. I believe it starts at 6:00 PM. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I saw the pictures of the arc furniture, it looks pretty cool.
Yeah. It's nice to have some fun things to talk about.
All right. Mr. Parentozzi, do you want to move on with the SRR3 update, please?
Of course. Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the requirements for the SRR3, and this of course is the funding that is helping all of us deal with the challenges of the pandemic, is that we have to post the document that we do online for, to apply for the grant. So A, the most important thing is it's posted as required. I do want to give the directions to people who may be interested. It's a pretty dry document, but it is a requirement. If you go to our website and click on District, click on Policies and Plans, you will see at the bottom of the list of Policy and Plans, the item entitled Johnson SRR3 Implementation Plan (COVID Relief Plan), end of parentheses. And within, when you click on that, you'll get to this rather lengthy document, which details how we plan to use the, the funding. I want to be absolutely clear with the members of the school committee, it is a plan. Plans change. The realities of the pandemic may require us to do other things with this money. And obviously, I would bring that to your attention. But you know, if you go to the plan and say, gee, item 13, I don't remember seeing that, you can just contact me and I'll, I'll look it up and figure it out. Some of the things we were going to do with this money, we already did with the SR2 money or the SR1 money, which we had to spend first. So you know, it could be a domino effect. Okay? So that's important. In your packet, and today when I sent the updated packet, I actually separated it because you had already received it once, and I figured you may not want to have another 21-page document. Again, is the NEC Annual Report, the North Shore Education Consortium, of which we belong. We pay a certain amount of money to belong to the consortium, and then of course, we pay for the services as required by our students who need specific and specialized assistance. And the cafeteria HVAC update, Madam Chair, Item HC is an interesting one. So I encumbered about $37,000 for the new rooftop unit above the cafeteria. We spent a fraction of that and were able to rebuild it. If you remember, I mentioned that to you. I wasn't comfortable spending all that money without trying other things first. Well, those other things first seem to have worked for once in my life. And what I'm looking at, I'm getting an estimate for putting very large ceiling fans up in the cafeteria. As we were going through this complex process, what, one of our consultants looked up and said, gee, you know, you're, you're heating the top of this room really well. Too bad where we are is the coldest place in the room. And that's in fact, the reality, and I've known it for years, I just didn't know what to do about it, because we were, we were dealing with other things, the gym floor, the roof, et cetera. The heat enters the room about 15 to 18 feet off the ground, and then there's a peak ceiling, so the, the heat goes up. So it layers down. What we intend to do with the money that we've encumbered, if possible, is to put some commercial-sized, slow-moving fans to drive down the heat, to relieve the stress on the HVAC unit, which would help. And then in the hotter weather, to create a breeze to cool off the area. So that's new. You haven't heard about that brainstorm recently, but I think it's a good idea, and will, it obviously will depend upon the cost that the estimate will enlighten us to. And that's it from me, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Before we talk as a committee, would you like to present the information that was provided from the Johnson School staff regarding the feedback on opening the school?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I would be pleased to. You mentioned the, the first, well, let me start with how this happened. I sent an email to any contact person of any association or group or organization that had used the Johnson School in the last two years, that the school was being used as a community facility. Basically, I said that you would be considering opening the school at this meeting. And the activities could include PTO meetings and activities, community athletic recreation or arts activities, in-person teacher meetings, in-person trainings and professional development, in-person conferences and meetings, classroom volunteers by teacher invitation, and school-wide assemblies. And I invited all those, these individuals to either attend the meeting tonight, or to contact me with any questions, or to submit by email or hard copy, honor before January 5th, a statement. Mr. Lapp is one of the individuals who responded very quickly on December 28th, and I believe, Madam Chair, you characterized his opinion and position, and the members of the school committee have that document in their packet. I then got a communication from the NTA Executive Board, which I forwarded to the members of the school committee. They surveyed their members. 16 members responded. The question of the survey was, do you think the Johnson Elementary School should be open to parents, guardians, guests, and community use at this time? 16 members responded 100%, or all 16 responded no. A member of the school committee then communicated with me and said, boy, it would help if we knew why. I spoke with the chair. I then sent a communication to the president of the NTA and thanked them for their input, and said, quote, "It would inform the discussion and be helpful if the school committee members could know the reasons that the NTA members had the position they took." Then I received a communication which detailed the reasons. And the reasons, and I again forwarded this to members of the school committee. It really helps to have it all in one place, though, which I did this evening. The reasons are as follows. This is quotation, verbatim. One, the recent surge in COVID cases due to the Omicron variant are of significant concern. Two, concerns about COVID protocols not being followed. Three, contact tracing concerns, hard to keep track of, and who would do it? Unquote. And that is all of the response I got to my, I think it was 16 emails.
Thank you for providing that information. It was helpful. I want to first maybe start by sharing my thoughts on, you know, reopening the school to outside, you know, activities. You know, I would say that my thoughts from the last meeting are relatively unchanged. I mean, obviously, there's the concern with the current COVID surge, because COVID numbers are very high, but as reflected with the numbers in the Johnson School, that when appropriate safety precautions are put into place, spread within the school can be, you know, managed. And, you know, opening to activities that occur after the school day is done, and staff and students are out of the school, doesn't directly affect the students who then come into the school building the following day, because we know that this is a virus that's spread through, you know, through the air and not on surfaces. And so, you know, I can appreciate the concern in general in life about COVID numbers being very high, but I don't know that that necessarily affects my thoughts on whether or not we open up the school for use. I think that when we, when we reopened the school in the fall, you know, we were so concerned about what our protocols would be in terms of masking, distancing, particularly because we had a meeting before the DESC came out with their guidelines, that we, you know, failed to, at the time, discuss school use, school building use outside of just for education. Whereas when other schools opened, you know, later during last school year, they opened with more knowledge. And so when our, when our school building reopened in the fall of 2020, you know, we did so with the most stringent guidelines, which included that it was just open for students and staff for education purposes. Whereas other schools that opened in the spring opened more fully because it was further on during the pandemic, and we just haven't readdressed that. I think unfortunately, we missed the window of opportunity to open it fully at an easier time. But we recognize that we have a lot of knowledge about the virus and mitigation strategies. So, you know, I guess my biggest thought in terms of opening the school now is that we're at a point of disservice to families who could really benefit from entering into the school to have group conversations with the teachers and administration, particularly for IEPs. And so in terms of timeliness and pushing for this sooner rather than later, they're the families that are on my mind, because I want, I'm not saying that, you know, IEP meetings need to be in person, but I think it's appropriate to have the option available for these families. But I'm also not against the idea of opening the school fully for activities outside of school-based activities. I'm sure somebody else has an opinion that they'd like to share.
I feel like I've spoken about this at other meetings at length, and I'm more than, more than happy to hear from other members first, if, if they prefer. I think I echo a lot of the same sentiments as Ms. Lane. I am constantly vigilant, aware, fearful, all of the things related to COVID at all times. So I completely understand, you know, expressing concern about our more recent surge in cases as a population related to Omicron. I understand that fully. I think that, you know, the, the fear and the concern is shared probably by the majority of the community. At the same time, I take solace in the fact that mitigation strategies have been proven to be effective. And I think that as a school committee member, if I'm asked to decide on policy, I'm going to do so based on, on data more than anything else. And I think right now, if I'm making difficult decisions, I'm falling back on science, and that's what we've done over the past two years. When difficult decisions and confusing situations arise, we're trying to, I've been trying to fall back, I think a lot of us have, on science and what we know to be true. So I think as a facility, you know, we have a policy that, you know, masks are required, hand hygiene is required. Anyone who's using the facility is required to adhere to those rules and regulations. And, you know, if our facility is being used outside of the school day by other organizations such as the Basketball League, from whom we've, we've received this letter, and, and they agree to our, our policies and procedures regarding COVID mitigation strategies, and they agree to assume the responsibility for enforcing them, then I think that that is quite reasonable. And we discussed at other meetings that the, the activities that would be going on, if we're thinking about things like intramural basketball, whether it be Girl Scouts or Child Scouts, you know, Scouts of any sort, whatever it might be that's used our facility in the past, those activities are going on at the YMCA, they're going on at the JCC. Yeah, I could name a bunch of different facilities where our student body is attending these activities. And so it's not a new activity we're talking about, it's just a different place to do it. And as Ms. Lane had mentioned, you know, we know now that COVID-19 spreads through, you know, respiratory, spread through the air, through droplets. And, and so, you know, contact with, you know, the ground, whether the surfaces in the school, one day does not actually increase risk the following morning when students come back in. And we didn't know that, as Ms. Lane pointed out, when we created this, this policy, you know, two years ago, or a little bit more than that. So I think it's, it's worth revisiting this, and I still feel like if we make our decisions based upon what we know is true, that's the safest way to proceed. And when it comes to allowing, you know, parents or other individuals into the school building during the day, that would be at the discretion of the administration and teachers and staff. So if, if the school committee were to vote, you know, that other individuals are not barred from the school by our policy, I think the discretion of implementation is up to everyone else. You know, it's, it's never been the case that individuals can just walk into our, our school. You know, we have to buzz in, and we have to say what we're there for, we have to have a visitor pass if it's appropriate. You know, we have all of those rules that have always been in place for many reasons, because of safety, not just COVID. And, you know, teachers, Mr. Andrews, I'm sure you could speak to this, but teachers have, I'm sure, never been required to, or would not be required to, at least at this time, you know, have volunteers or other people in their classroom during the day. That's at the discretion of the teacher in collaboration with the principal. The school committee would never impose that, you know, certainly, you know, on, on the institution. I think we're just thinking about the fact that the facility is something that we're responsible for, so this decision-making is something for us to think about in a big picture. I can stop talking.
Um, I just want to, I want to clarify something. So are we not talking about parents and guardians going in during the school day to, for, for any other reason except for IEPs? Are we only talking about that in terms of IEP meetings? Because I think about these two things differently. There's the question of parents and guardians in during the school day, and then there's use of facility outside of the school day by outside groups. Am I right about that, or am I missing something?
So we could vote upon opening the school for certain things, or we could vote upon opening the school in general. And if that's to answer your question, we're just having a discussion, nothing has been proposed.
Okay. Okay, sorry, Gina. I just wanted, because I do, in my mind, they're very different. And part of the reason, so let me back up. I'm a, I absolutely agree with both of you about using science as one of the most critical guides. For me, there's another critical guide, which is the comfort and collaboration of the school community. It is, I especially during the school day, and this is, you know, sort of where bisects for me. I think I'm, as a school committee member, I'd be like, what is my role as a school committee member here? What it feels like? And I welcome pushback or Mr. Parentozzi, if I get something wrong here, as I am the rookie. I, it is sort of the duty and care of supporting the staff and the building and the leadership. and the building and the leadership to do the best educational situation for our students, right? First and, first and foremost. I may not be the only thing, but it's a, it's the driving thing. And so then here we have with that first part of like during the school day, which would include volunteering, IEP meetings, a meeting with a teacher, a leader, et cetera, for a parent. Then it's, okay, does the staff have, have spoken in the group that responded? And I think 16 staff members responding, that's a, that's a big amount of the staff, right? That's a fair percentage of our staff. There, it's not like, it's not divided, it's not even like 90/10. It's 100, like that red circle was meaningful, you know, to us, I think. And they are saying no, not right now, you know, at this time. And now, we did, I think that we did ask the question, like, should, should they be allowed to come in for various reasons? I wonder what the answer would have been if we had separated those things out, right? So question mark. But it does matter, right? It does, it does matter. And whether I agree personally or not, and I, and, you know, and I say that and it's hard, I can't imagine what it's like to actually be a medical staff where you get to like know a little bit, a lot more and see this potentially differently. So I have a lot of humility in the face of particularly Gina and Lauren in this. But I got, as an educator who works side by side with staff and they bring to life what they can, it does, it, it's not, it doesn't feel good to me for the business of schooling that would intersect with them, that would put other people, adults in, in this space that they are trying to keep safe and create for young people right now for learning. I do think there is a benefit to students, to parents coming in. I have a, a child with an IEP. I would like to go in, in, and be able to meet in person. And I don't know that if the staff really feel offended by that, I don't know that the gain of parents coming in is, is a, is going to be that much better to mitigate the staff feeling a deeper sense of concern, work, responsibility, whatever it is, you know, that's behind that, that those 16 people at least saying that this is not the right time. So for me, on that issue, I, I don't feel like we should go forward with parents and guardians. As much as I would like to be one of those parents and guardians, I don't, that doesn't feel right to go in the face of what the staff are saying right now for me, for me. I, I'm not sure how I feel about the facility's use. So I have more questions about that, but I'm going to stop talking on this one.
No, I agree with what everyone has to say, and I think they are two separate issues. You know, I think we have to really take into account where the educators are comfortable, and if they're not comfortable during the school day with having people come into the school and their classrooms, I think we need to respect that. And then after school, well, that I think is a little different. And so I, I have a different opinion in that I think we should open for after-school programs. But those are my two cents based on everything that I've heard, both the science and the educational aspect.
So, Madam Chair, if I could make a couple of statements and maybe ask some questions for clarity, it may help. I think initially the school committee was basically talking about opening it up to the community. And I remember I kind of may have thrown the monkey wrench into the decision because I said, well, does that mean we're going to allow a recreation group to come into our school and a parent care come in? So I kind of opened it up. I think the members of the school committee this evening have clearly identified for me that there are two timeframes. One is from the beginning of the morning to 6:00 PM during a school day. The other is from 6:00 PM to closing and Saturday. I use 6:00 PM advisedly because it used to be earlier, but our after-school program now goes a half hour later because of the island routes magnanimously extending their hours for the convenience of our parents. Most of the students are out by 4:30, but some are still here till 6:00. I believe the number is generally 7 to 10. So, and I don't know. I read you the list of activities I stated in my email. And then the leadership of the NTA decided how to ask the question. So I have no idea whether it matters to them or not. I think my guts telling me it does. That they are much more concerned and aware of what's happening between the beginning of the school day and 6:00 PM. And then if someone's in a building from 6:00 to 8:00, based on the science that you eloquently stated, we know that the next morning, there's not going to be an issue. So there's two things rattling around in my head. The school committee could open the building, as I said, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, or 6:00 to 10:00 PM. I, I forget, actually, it's been a year and a half. I don't remember. Our custodian is here till 10:00, so let's say 9:00. And then on Saturdays. All of that, of course, is determined upon the fact that we can get someone to work on Saturday. James is here from 6:00 to 9:00, Monday through Friday. So that's not the issue. But on Saturday, it may be, I don't know. So the way I'm thinking is that the school committee would vote to remove the prohibition as compared to telling the administration how to handle the decisions. As Ms. Cherlock said, we have a process, we've been doing it for years. We're going to follow the guidelines, we're just going to add masks and hand washing. And I mean, I love to say physical distancing, but there's no way there's going to be physical distancing during these activities. So it's basically mask and hand washing. And if the school committee chooses that, that's fine. I would argue vehemently against opening the building during the school hours till 6:00 PM based on the strong opposition of our professional educators. But the school committee could also do the same for those hours and leave it to myself, Mr. Andrews, and the NTA to work out how that's going to work during the school day, if you wanted to.
I personally think that that was kind of the intent of what I said in a very elegant way earlier. Is that I don't feel comfortable having a school committee policy that doesn't make sense to me in light of the virus and what we know about it. I think that that doesn't make sense to me. Now, me dictating how the administration or teachers want to handle the school day, that's completely out of my realm. That is something that should be, in my opinion, in the hands of the administration. So I don't pretend to want to micromanage a classroom or a school and any of that. So I think, you know, take a step back, that's what I was kind of trying to say too. So thank you for saying it in a much more clear way, Mr. Parentozzi. But that proposal you just said at the end about one way we could approach it, that's, I think, what I intended.
Yeah, so I think the bottom line.
I agree with that, too. Sorry.
No, that's okay. Go ahead. You're, you're a member of the school committee.
I miss that nuance. I, I agree with that way. I actually was just going to say, I don't, I don't think this belongs here in some ways. So, at all. And I think that, that, you know, it has always felt a little funky to me. So I think we give an opinion and you, you do it as you see fit.
Yeah, we just don't have a rule that stands in your way. I think that that's what I'm intending is not to have a policy that then halts you from being able to invite parents in when everyone feels like it's appropriate and comfortable. That's what I don't like. Yeah.
So, so Madam Chair, if I'm hearing correctly, the action of the school committee would be to end the prohibition for, for the community using, or any group using the building from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. And on Saturdays, we do not use the building on Sunday, just so you know, we never have. And then to remove the absolute prohibition for guests and visitors during the school day. So that the administration and the teachers can work it out to the level of comfort that we have. In all, in all candor, if that was what you did, the end product, maybe nobody uses the building, or maybe lots of people do. I don't know.
I agree with that. The only amendment I wanted to make was, I think that previously the school use was open starting at 5:30 and for members outside of the students and staff. You know, it just doesn't make any sense to me to have it open to the community, which could theoretically even be, you know, adults playing basketball before our students are done with the after-school program. So could we just adjust the school opening time to 6 o'clock to reflect the opening, the end of the after-school program, as you had mentioned?
Right.
So instead of just removing
It's not, it's not an
prohibition, I would just recommend that it can't be used by outside community members until 6 o'clock.
Right. Now, just, just to, let's, let's just talk through some of the things that, if that's what the school committee did, that would mean that if the NTA or the PTA want, PTO wanted to have a meeting of their own officers, et cetera, that would be permitted. If the basketball program wanted to have an activity on Saturday morning or from 6:00 to 8:00 in the evening, that would be permitted. If Mr. Andrews, who just eloquently talked about some MPY activities, found out that the staff would rather have those activities in person rather than electronic, he would move forward with that possibility, starting much earlier than 6:00.
Right.
Okay. The school-wide assemblies, we've been only having groups outdoors. At this time, I can't even imagine amending that, but you would be giving Mr. Andrews the right, the authority rather, to do that because you're going to remove the prohibition. So if he, if he wanted to have a school-wide assembly, he could indoors. If Teacher A met with the appropriate safeguards as determined by our wonderful nurse and Mr. Andrews, and wanted to have a visitor in his or her classroom during the school day, he or she could do so.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. You, you realize why I'm saying these specifically?
Yes, yes.
I think all of this is exactly what we intended, or at least what I intended the whole way. It was never demanded anyone to do anything but to enable the teachers and the administration to decide.
And Madam Chair, I think that's all the permutations that I can think of. And obviously, we, in terms of the 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM and the Saturday morning, we would go through the, you know, the handwritten application process, et cetera, that we always have.
The only other variable that I didn't bring up during community correspondence, although in reflection, maybe I should have. I attended the PTO meeting last night, and it wasn't in direct correspondence. Well, maybe it was indirect to the school committee. It was a question in regards to if the, you know, if the school is going to be open for after-school activities that the PTO could specifically run. So it wasn't a request of us to open the school for PTO activities. It was a question if I thought that that was going to happen. So, you know, I don't, I don't know that they have any specific activities that they're planning on running right now, but another variable that is an activity outside of the school day, but not necessarily after 6:00, is that the PTO may be interested, depending upon what happens tonight, and running some programs. So my thought with that would be they would apply and you would have, because we would remove the prohibition, you could use the discretion of the administrative staff to either allow, you know, these activities.
Yeah, I, I, as a matter of fact, Madam Chair, thank you for bringing that up. That was in the back of my mind. We've already approved that in the fall under limited circumstances. So my predisposition is to be positive to that. As long as the staff had plenty of notice. So for example, if I'm a teacher and somebody's going to use my room, I need to have notice if I don't want to be in the area, if I want to leave or go to, go somewhere else to work for the rest of the, my prep period. Meaning, you know, 2:30 to 3:30. I would have enough opportunity to do so, so that I would be able to keep myself safe. But I would think that if the PTO or a staff member wanted to run an activity, that we would be positively disposed to that, since we've already done it, seemingly without negative impact. And the cohort is the same. You know, the cohort of individuals involved isn't going to be changing. It's our students in our school. The only change would be the adults coming in. And obviously, they would be fully masked and I'm going to ask that everybody be vaccinated. Prior to coming in. Well, let me put it this way. I'm going to be asking our, our medical people what I should require. And I'm pretty sure they're going to say a mask and vaccination, but maybe not. I don't know.
I think that's really prudent, Mr. Parentozzi.
So if, if there's no further discussion, if one of the members of the school committee would like to make a motion to remove the prohibition regarding school facility use.
I'd like to make a motion to remove the restriction prohibition on school facility use.
The way that I might write this, let me just make sure if it's okay. Motion made by Ms. Karras to end the prohibition of the Johnson School Building during non-school hours until 6:00 PM in parentheses, and remove the absolute prohibition of adults entering the building during the school day.
That sounds good.
I'll second the motion. Ms. Cherlock, any discussion? All in favor of the motion that's written? Ms. Karras, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Cherlock and myself, motion carries. Before we move on to personnel matters, Mr. Parentozzi, and I'm so sorry if I missed this. Did you give the NEC annual report? Did I miss that? Did I totally blank out?
I'm sorry, did I do what?
The NEC, the
You did review it, yeah.
Okay. I was looking at it in the packet, but I just want to make sure that we discussed it. Okay. So any personnel matters?
Well, I'm, I'm thinking that sometimes my comments are noteworthy. But sometimes, sometimes not. And that's okay. I'm okay with that. Yes, I have a personnel report. I'm going to speak in generalities because I'm uncomfortable becoming more specific. Mary DeGuardia, Mr. Andrews and myself have worked really hard to attempt to get a team chair and an occupational therapist onboard. We went through a multi-step process, including reference checks. And today was supposed to be a very positive day when that, when an individual, when, when, when people were hired for those positions. At the very end of the negotiations with someone, they informed me that they were neither vaccinated nor would take a rapid test on a regular basis. were neither vaccinated nor would take a rapid test on a regular basis. I, um, with abundance of caution, and I hope you agree, common sense, I refuse to hire that individual. So we're back to square one. The good news is, square one turned out to be square three. Uh, in the few hours that passed between that exchange with what I thought would be our next employee, uh, I got the name of a, an, uh, occupational therapist who's coming to see me on Thursday, coming to see, uh, Mr. Andrews, uh, Ms. DeGuardia and myself on Thursday. And, uh, an individual that we know well has volunteered to become the team chair for the rest of the school year. So, uh, what I thought was a really good day, which turned to a really bad day, ended up to be a pretty good day, so that's my personnel report.
To be the, uh, team chair? Is that something, is that decided upon, the team chair?
Nothing is decided upon right now, we're gonna have meetings on Thursday and interviews, and, uh, but, you know, as of one o'clock this afternoon, we had nothing.
Okay.
So as of three thirty this afternoon, we had, you know, the sun in my tie was showing again. Um, and I hope you support my concept that, I mean, if somebody doesn't wanna get vaccinated, that's totally their business. Uh, I have absolutely no right to impose that on anyone. But someone telling me that they won't even take a rapid test on a regular basis, that just, I don't think it would have been responsible of me to, to move forward. And I'm, I, you know, I'm really laying it out there for you, if you disagree with me, um, you can tell me, and, you know, but it seemed Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
It's interesting, uh, when I told the staff, because I had introduced the individual to a couple of staff members, I, I thought, I thought I was gonna get the, you know, this like stare and, you know, what are you doing? And actually, I got statements of appreciation for helping keeping them safe. Uh, and that was my intention, my only intention, I assure you. To keep these students and the staff safe.
Thank you. Tough decisions. Um, is there any other business from the committee? I think we discussed everything. Great, um, so seeing no other comments, if somebody would like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'd love to make a motion to adjourn this meeting at nine oh seven PM. I'll second that motion.
Thank you, all in favor? Ms. Karas, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Cherlock, and myself, thank you very much, have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, all.
Kevin, can you call me for a second?
Be happy to.
I just realized that, uh, somebody you've been working with may be an acquaintance of mine from thirty years ago.
Oh, great.